Today. The eighteenth day of April twenty twenty. On Saturdays, we can lay a table, the things that will happen inside Sierra Leone during the week. Um, I think to the end of all waiting up on, then we will come to the coronavirus updates, the numbers them and how everything looks for today. But after we become out now, last Saturday, on Sunday, fake news be they go around. We, they use the letterhead from State House for say, na keke to ma, na here it's say then say teachers, then they no go pay them and all this things them, I think you be see that day. But it be come out again and say no, not to say be in that day, not to official statement. But some people they will get time now they hand, they feel say now for create panic because everybody they on lockdown now pretty much around the globe. So some man just feel say he get time for take and make fun. I mean, who can play that song now, we say not take this coronavirus make fun because now something we very, very serious. And it can be fatal and when it be fatal, uh, he he not fine for talk about them. We also landed the African Union Member States then be report and COVID nineteen case system as at that time. Because now if you go check, hm, the numbers then go be way different. And last Monday, uh, we not be get any new case, we be still keep am ten confirmed case system. The Monday we passed, when I be the, um, the Sunday, we in I be the twelfth of April, I be ten. And uh, we keep on that way there. We get an update for Sierra Leone COVID nineteen, there are two updates now because of that flying news. So the Ministry of Information and Communication, they give you two updates. One the morning between ten o'clock and eleven o'clock the morning salon time. And one in the evening between six o'clock and eight P M. Salon time, are the two ten they want in the way they can give you update. However, find out say lately, then the, you go take ten before they give you the updates. And maybe, uh, it's I forget the numbers then, because then two past days yeah, we already know what is the numbers then look like. We post now we websites. We we say boyah hotel na put loco, where then they use as quarantine center. Then be serve rotting egg them to residents. And people then be come against the post. Say if the people then where they serve the egg, they know what's in the inside the egg. Um, when I be see how people and they defend the rotting egg, it make I just feel sorry for we serve as Sierra Leoneans them. We all, most of the places the way you do in the west. Who still last you buy rotting egg in the west? Every egg, it gets expiry date. Where you go, you dey check the egg, you check the date, you even look the body before you buy him. I don't know, but for me, I don't know who's here for say a bracket rotting egg. Let alone, they serve rotting egg, then Sierra Leoneans then they can't defend say the people they not know what's in the inside the egg. But it's so swear the egg come off from. Then for no see, this particular egg, it not due for consumption anymore. But because even you now, if you go salon, the the last thing me there salon, why I want egg, I go na the poultry. I know they buy egg again at street. I go to our poultry, you know they far from me, and I even talked to the same, I forget she can want if I open anyone a rotting, may or not go get issue. Now I make I even come from, come to the source, and tell me say, oh, now this morning, I end and pick him up. What you make I they say this? Not so because we don't use for buy rotting egg na salon, we think say incorrect. So those people that were defending this particular post, what they defend and say, the people always serve the egg, they not even know what's in the inside the egg. So that means say incorrect. Anybody where they produce egg, we get a poultry, you know when that egg don't go bad, you know when, you know how long the egg supposed for last. As a matter of fact, I buy two different eggs them. One other one, it will come up the provinces, when I from a poultry. Where I tell somebody, and this person talk to other person. We say, oh, this person wants egg. I buy the egg from the provinces. Where, when the egg reach with me, say I finished that one three egg day. No problem I not get with both eggs, both three days they want I buy from poultry. Whereas in previous times, someone they go salon, where you buy egg, na like then Godrich ticket, like P Z, and all those places, so they pile the egg them. You might likely get rotting egg there. You might likely get stinking eggs in there. So since that time, I stop. But with people and need for understand say, I let you know more what's in the inside, because that's what the argument was all about. The people who also have the, you know, no what's in the inside, yes, it's true. But my dear, now a person, we pick the egg from a poultry, you know exactly how long that egg there for last. And we would defend if you go salon, if you there salon now, you dey buy rotting egg, you think say it's good, thinking to say, oh, because they're not know what's in the inside the egg, I'm afraid you've been a fraud or a dupe, I I don't know. But main problem back now that it on policy, you own organ as alone. So because me no say we not get them, I stop for buy from USA, me they go buy now on at the source. So if there is any problem, I have a conversation with them directly. So now feel say because you buy rotting egg, incorrect. Or you buy from the one they who they boil egg, you go come a rotting inside, incorrect, it not correct, it not supposed for be so. Amadu Bangwa say say an old egg is an older period. It not correct. So why are we defending it? Say the people they don't know, please, these are some of the little things them, we as a nation get for change. If that our mindset they, we get say, we buy rotting egg, na rotting egg, a big, it not correct. It not correct. Let we continue. Um, on Monday, which will be deal with now, we be remind the president of Sierra Leone, President Julius Madabio say, na he be talko, that twenty eighteen presidential debate say water na life. So we can remind them, say do ya, parana you be say watana life. And this life has been affected. So just wanna remind you, and we will be there now, we know how that conversation they go. That same Monday evening day, the Ministry of Health and Sanitation, they post say, we don't get a total confirmed case of eleven, we one added the evening. But however, Ministry of Communication, we na information, then we don't tell we say, we not know what's in, now we no more we na for believe where they give na information. And then they still stick to the thing, even though the Ministry of Health and Sanitation, they don't update their own Facebook. Mm hmm, Facebook, if you go, you go na the website, there's nothing there about COVID nineteen at the Ministry of Communication, their website, nothing oddity. But if you go na the Facebook, then be still all and there are ten. So people then begin act say, what's in they go on? Now ten we get on a eleven, because Ministry of Health, they tell we say eleven, Ministry of Communication, they tell we ten. Then within like eight in the morning, around eight o'clock, now then come out, they say eleven, they say however, now overnight, nae, the they receive that information, they say one more person don't added. So if now overnight, we not know they work overnight. When I receive the information, when I say make, we watch una page, una Facebook page, and then we will get everything. But sanitation don't tell we say one don't add, it take una eight hours before we can add that one the to una yours page. So who is not working here? They now go rely on una. But from that day, we not see anything like that happen again. However, we not see the Ministry of Health and Sanitation, they post so much again. So I don't know if communication be go meet there and say, no, we don't cause confusion, now we, now we for the talk, not to we for the talk. We not just give you the right figures, please, that then they no more who they ask of. With all this shake shake where they go on by COVID nineteen, not forget say, the civil service have then do, and there's been a shake up in there. Yes, then transfer some man, some man, no, he both can place it for day. But shake up day at the civil service, if you want see I'm, go na we website today. Either they move from USA and to USA. We be share a video, we don't get over twenty two thousand views now we page. We now Raymond de Souza George ninety one. We, it's here for give a keynote address, like say we fifty ninth year of independence, where they come, and also meet up with the COVID nineteen. You go find make you look on, if you not see, nothing about that yet. That same Tuesday, the FCC, the Freedom City Council, we want make we no say, then don't distribute three thousand locally made mask to market traders, na Sanya Abacha Street, Salad Grun and Kotoro Market. Then distribute three thousand mask. And now in partnership with Madame Yoki, I then be doing. Also, then we want make we know say, the FCC again, after then don't ship that mask day, then be again start for rollout, then donation of hand washing stations. We then be doing a different part them, na Free Town. People then be get act say, wait to, why make na just inside Free Town, what about the western area rural? We not forget say, mayor even a kiss soya, not in the cover yanda. Akasha Holland Cole, na in the cover, na the western rural. So they want they will be the ask. Make you know that. And what will be deal with now? Where China, they accuse United States for say they want harm the relationship we then get with African nations. We be calling a table again, the thing we be they go on, na China with the Africans them, where they do. You remember say last Saturday, what's in be the trend? Na the grammar, we be make that video for that Port Authority then fire truck. We be go na that house, we go pump water. You remember, we be say, the Port Authority, they be so quick, they say be pull a press release, and they say then they investigate. And they not tip at the investigation, oh. Because by Wednesday, from Saturday by Wednesday, they tell we say, they don't get some findings. And then we get for put there, either they suspend, they suspend, either they fire, they fire. If you want know what's in the inside, they go on our website, it's there. The Seirite Mining Company, say, they don't see other banks, then they go, then they go dump money at the COVID nineteen fund. So then it's a feel say, it's just right, may then say just dash one billion leons. Then donate one billion leons, Seirite Mining Company, then donate one billion leons to the COVID nineteen fund. Twenty five African countries them go get IMF debt relief. And salon there among. Inside that conversation there, you get but Kuma, we be they say, wait to, na debt relief or na debt cancellation? Because some man they say debt relief, that the interest you know they pay, done then they say make you wait first. Since you get this issue where they go on concerning the COVID nineteen now, since you get away they go on, well, that money, we suppose for they pay IMF, if na quarterly or if na monthly now. I anyhow, the arrangement be there, then go put and hold on that first. But however, some people they say that one they not waiver more, because they not say debt cancellation. They say debt relief, relief, now for say, okay, then they ease you first, make you all a day first. Then they want they wish I be, we not go explain to we, if the relief na the same as cancellation. To fight coronavirus pandemic, ECOWAS pledges support to member states. People then be get act say, wait to, ECOWAS, ide? What's then they do say with all this where they happen, na the ECOWAS region concerning the COVID nineteen? Well, now, we not do you, they say then they pledge their support. I don't know if na financially or na morally, but however, then they pledge their support. The First Lady of Sierra Leone, don't they make news, this be enter. So he write a piece. He say, my children, as I talk to you about the meaning of love today, I want you all to learn a thing or two from my experience, which experience? The experience of love, where the First Lady get, with the President of Sierra Leone, President Julius Madabio, he write to on our website, indeed, I can explain to you what he said. And on Wednesday, we will get two more cases. We add, remember from that Monday, we na be eleven, on Wednesday, we be get two cases, we make am a total of fourteen confirmed cases them. The Inspector General of Police and the Chief of Defense Staff, say, then go na mile thirty eight checkpoint, for go caution the police and the military personnel the way they do. For say do ya, this interdistrict lockdown. Because they are na the main road now we come inside Free Town. Make them team up fine. Not like that bribery business. May then try for round from them. Some people then say, then hope say, after this visit, the I G and the C D S, they not go tap on you. Make then they do, if now one or two themselves on announce visit, for go check there with people in there, there thirty eight, where then I then checkpoint them. After what's in be happen on Monday, Julius Spencer, they write, he say for coordinate communications properly. Because of that thing between the Ministry of Communication and the Ministry of Health. See who else? Now they only make space for make, they want they really building false information, made in the creator. We also see USA Information Technology Officer. We, now the person within our pharmacy board of Sierra Leone, anti-corruption see, then indict them on various corruption offenses. Power Women two three two, they say be go na FCC, I did then care they own forty Veronica buckets then. Also with forty regular buckets, when I don't want them to for catch the dirty water. And then na soup base then I then care to FCC. Where FCC for she bam, to the people them, where they think say neither most. On Wednesday, because of that conversation, we be get, we be get another one now, we will see, diaspora influence in rebuilding Sierra Leone healthcare system. That was very interesting now. And I believe say, if you be take part but that program there, you know how the conversation be go. On Thursday, we be get two new cases again. We carry to total of fifteen COVID nineteen cases them. And we'll be land say, one of them is standing, I'm from Kenema and the other one I'm from Free Town. Well, this one, now from the Sierra Leone Judiciary, then Facebook page, because although we can get most of the news them, we get for do with the judiciary of Sierra Leone. And most of their own headline them, hm, make I read me here. As High Court sits in the district, stakeholders in bond bless the Honorable Chief Justice Edwards. And so they say, they say because the High Court sits, now the bond district, the people already there, bless the Chief Justice Edwards, to Sierra Net, we report him as then give him. On Thursday, because of that two case, we will be get on Wednesday, two case on Thursday, we be calling a table say, hm, the fight against the increase of the coronavirus, which will things say for do. And from there, Friday, we get for land say, there is some issue with the Lands Ministry and the Free Town City Council. I believe say, a lot of people them no say, the Ministry of Lands, don't they make headline as alone. Some, not for any good reason. It left to you, I you want we, you want we you go call good gazing, and you want we you go call bad raising. But this particular one, I think say, the bodies them were responsible, they need for step in and caution, who needs to be cautioned here? Now, so it will go for laying a table, maybe one day next week, and because of the COVID nineteen, it a jack jack we small, now I make we not don't lay on a table. The Ministry of Lands, um, there is this waterway na lonely. Where people then be don't go, then they go begin put structure for bill. So the Free Town City Council, the Metropolitan Police them, with the mayor then go there, then stop the building. They stop him, say, let nothing not happen, because what's in do, if that building they done, it go block the waterways them. Now they the water, the way they come out, all caning go, all them places, and then now they they can empty. So any kind way then go block him for put that building, they the foundation, so then we stop everything. The mayor and the police then, the met police, they left. Later, the met police then call the mayor, say, eh, madam mayor. Then people they don't begin back oh, and this time, they get police where they watch over them. Then the mayor say, okay, well, I'm good that they come. The mayor reach there. Where the mayor reach there, the police then tell, the mayor say, the people them, where the mayor be stopped, come with document from Ministry of Lands. Because they can't with documents from Ministry of Lands, and the documents look authentic, so what's in they say, they give them, they go ahead. Even though, that particular thing they go cause disaster. It go cause, it go endanger the lives of citizens them, because in the long run, that water they go block, flooding go happen somewhere, or the water go get power pass the building, it broke and down. So what's in, in order endanger the lives of people them. However, the mayor say, they vent out in frustration, then he call the parliamentarian, where they under, when a honorable Tawa. So honorable Tawa in can now, he tell the policeman and say, no, this one if for stop, as a member of parliament, na me area, make you stop, make we see, who da gear, give them the paper, and make we, make them explain you we, why they think say, them people here for can't block waterways. Why they think so? So, because of, I think, yanda, the mayor not be able to stop the work oh, but the parliamentarian, he come, he stop the work. If you say all thing done, don't notice oh, oh, no, 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 he not done. The next moment, wait to we here. The Free Town City Council get a waste collection project where they go on, where it's a defeed funded project. A defeed funded project, assigned they they will say FCC, they put the feed and all the partners, the way they fund the project. And see, FCC go stop that man for building waterways. Well, I don't know if I coincidentally oh, on a revenge from what's in be happen yanda oh, Ministry of Lands, then go USA FCC building there, then go broke them. Yes, then broke them, then damaged the roof, videos then they around. Another one, the way the mayor they explain. According to what the mayor explain, yes, they say, the request be suppose for don't go meet the Ministry of Lands. We not go meet the Ministry of Lands. But however, the mayor in they say, for the matter of fact, where the Ministry of Lands people then come na the site, they see Free Town City Council, they see defeed funded projects, they see all the blocks them and everything where they go on. In field say, then for be call him and accent say, we can't hear, we see oh, what's in they go on. But however, then go ahead and damage what's in them be they do. So in they say, how you think say, like defeed and then partners then they, how they go take, take we, we governors? How you feel say, then they go take and say, oh, we fund the project, and the project is being done, and the Ministry of Lands come off from nowhere, even though they signed they did. They can, they can broke them, somebody, where I don't know, but he say, he swear to anything, he say, when the soldier man then come in, he run. He be left money inside bag, seven hundred thousand, he say then take the money, then take then tools them, but then he be the bag done. Now so he say. So I think say, the authorities responsible now, they have this thing they go, it done they come out of hands. And somebody needs to be cautioned. Somebody needs to be cautioned. I I don't think say we need this right now. We no need them. And we not go turn a blind eye onto it too. Like say, you know they happen. For make the council, we responsible for the city. And the one they were responsible for land, then they face. Because the mayor, on that video, then they claim say, Because the mayor on that video, then they claim say, the sign, even they talk about whatever. The same place is them, the people then what they say for car wash. Now so they give them. But, well, we yet to see how things unfold. But then two people in there, FCC and Ministry of Lands. Something needs to be done before we say and go to another level, we no go find. You know say the money then they come for the coronavirus from NGO, eh everybody, how many they collect? Anti-corruption commission say, then they launch a coronavirus. Response transparency tax force. A coronavirus response transparency tax force, ACC do launch them. So they want make people they know about that. See they don't launch them oh. So we ACC go call you for go answer, make you go get correct answer them for there. Yesterday. Where we get the highest number of cases them in one day. Eleven new confirmed case now we be get. And also. We be play the message with the ambassador. Um to Sierra Leone where then a United States, when a honorable Abubakar Siddique Y, where he been give. However, that particular video there. I think now quite few people them comment on the message where the ambassador give. The ambassador be then I host and do a video. To all the people them where they under in jurisdiction. However. People then see. The ambassador where P G. And then enough aware. They not even, most people they not even talk safe about the message where the ambassador give. And some people say, he is unlocked and then I host, he want make you understand, say yes, now you host it, I make you a P G. But you know our people. If Freetown City Council be also want make we know say, then launch five different projects them. And then project there, now five different community them, we get for do with the drainage system. We hope say, because we know say the ends don't begin on us alone. That massive flooding. There we can get once a year, we just hope say then the drainage are go able for help. And then communities here where they know I mark for say, then go try for correct the drainage the way they do. You know with all this theory they go on, school lock and all them things in there. So the Ministry of Education, basic and senior secondary school, want make who knows say. Then they establish. An education emergency tax force. Where now in the one for use for support learning during this Covid nineteen school closure. Education Emergency Tax Force. What we be deal with now yesterday? We be deal with the eleven confirmed case where we get. And people in the call say make them lockdown for fourteen days, people in they say no, make them just let this partial lockdown. And make we see how things they unfold. We also Lancy the Sierra Leone government and the EU. Then I want, now the picture we the seen at the screen now if you the watch on Facebook. They sign a sixty million euro towards waiting, jobs and growth program. The government of Sierra Leone and the European Union. They sign a sixty million euro jobs and growth program. Well, we the wait, the signing don't take place. We the wait when the implementation, we go see say yes, jobs have been created. And the growth we the want for see is being achieved in Sierra Leone. Today. We get four new confirmed cases them. We don't carry we now to a total of thirty confirmed Covid nineteen case them, that's alone. And we are yet to, this is the thing we had to talk about. Ministry of Information, give me the information, no left nothing be in. When Umar Ofofa now, they report now in Facebook page, they give you the update. And as it is now, a lot of people, I see the right on Facebook say, now Umar Ofofa now you know and then they wait for. For make them go correlate them with waiting the Ministry of Information and Communication give me. Umar Ofofa now tell you yes, about the four new cases and everything. But something they, we he put inside eh. For say a South African woman. Where be test positive. Any man test negative last week. Then don't repatriate them back, go side and go mouth. So when we see confirmed case now for Tuma. The confirmed case gave a go down? Or it still gonna be business as usual for thirty? Because I look the update where the ministry give me. They no write nothing. But somebody where test positive, we not they again, that's alone. From the UK in Sierra Leone, the British High Commission that's alone. They want make we know say, if you. Nah. UK, you come out, and you get a passport, you're a national. Then get a chattered flight. Where they come us alone on Wednesday. Wednesday for all UK nationals. Wednesday, now on I own flights they left. If you go on our website, you go get all the link, the who say for register and all those things. At if you want come us alone oh, because they never force you. If you want come us alone on Wednesday, now in the chatted flight, they go salon. I think from there, it a left direct to Stansted. Yes, direct flights. Now until we see inside salon. We have directly from salon to the UK. Stansted airport, now there they go. So if you saw be somebody within a salon from the UK, we in a UK nationals, hey, give him the heads up. Sierra Leone Bar Association then serve say they pull, press Gili say, they want encourage the government for lockdown for fourteen days. Today. We be Lancy a Sierra Leonean staff nurse. Where based now the UK. Be succumb to Covid nineteen. In name Michael Aleo. May his soul rest in peace. After that, another Sierra Leonean, they take to in Facebook page. When a half bar. When I practicing lawyer and a salon. He take to in Facebook page for make we know say. He's been tested positive for Covid nineteen. So we get for put him. For make people they know say half bar. Any wife, now in tell we back say, a wife, be don't test positive. For Covid nineteen last week. And a fifty a student at the College of Medical and Applied Health Science that's alone. But him believe say, and go fight back here in wealth, for make them write their story. This one, and then post on for we say they are positive. So we share the story. Rather than the one where people then go and demand for make, then give their names of people them who test positive. Then turn at the thing they we pass through Sierra Network for this past week. What you new one laying a table? You be miss something we want contribute on? You be miss something where you say things say you for up much pa? Or something else pass now you read ah, where you are make we know? Yes, caller, you there live on here, your name and who's I the call from?
Well, my name from Morocco, Roma, the call from Algeria. Been at Corinna Dugans, um our risk concern come be collect today, we been the watch A Y V this evening. We up to now people then still the request for this water business. Now government and they try for put down for this other two weeks back, this two weeks lockdown is good. But we the big Papa government for making way we look inside eh, concerning this water business and electricity. Now. Now the case don't look very worst, if we think about all accounting them, we think about the medical business. How the medical facilities there, presently down in the sky, every day they die. And for salon, me I can always talk this, hello, we not get to hospital, pharmacies that we get. So we big Papa government, if they therefore do this two weeks lockdown save, let they will put this water business more in place. And let they will talk to the police them back. The police then intimidate people them write too much, then even enter the people them houses them. Like more they talk to you, so now me small boy and I a victim na Kabala, na Evangelion where a police go meet an avan that I see don't there with him full. The policeman say they enter and we go meet an avan and they hold a bit a mass less one. We go to police, they say if we no know say we don't understand state of emergency. Up to now that issue lay, then they pan turn turn and they. We say well now let they charge the police with the bomb on a court, let them go fetch for justice, up to now the police you know do them. The police and they use their own power now for intimidate people them too much on that country, so we the big Papa government then you have to look to that back. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you very much, caller, thank you, sir. Amadu Bangura now Facebook say, the Ministry of Land need for do more work. And accurate job, and they come out from Amadu Bangura now Facebook. Yes, caller, you there live on here, your name and who's I the call from?
Uh, this is Adamah from New York.
Yes, Adamah, you get the platform.
I just want to talk about um, the we brought up in my China. The way, whether we treat them. Uh, maybe to government of Sierra Leone, the Excellency. For make you make sure they treat them right, we don't know much about them. Because they're not a charity. The mon, they think that whether they take, the Chinese, whether they take them from our country. And all the continent of Africa, it not even one, one quarter of what in, where they get from them. So I therefore ask the president, make it how the government of China. And the cities of China, they should not my treat our brothers and sisters. And I also want to tell me my brothers and sisters, they went to China. That, don't let somebody make you do something we will regret. You go there for a reason, I want you make you concentrate, I want you to represent yourself and also our country. The other two are for Rob Bonpana, neither that um technician. And the authoritative uh uh the, the professor of um. For Abby, where somebody say, people then say, oh, they be they call him, they not reach him. You know, they get the phone or he run away or whatever it is. Maybe I appeal to everybody, where you in America field, whether you not, you not clean now. Whether you now a housekeeper, whether you now a ordinary nurses aid like me. And all the open archer laws then, we, they take the job here. Not only for money, but because we want to help and want to make life better. For people then. So me they ask, and me they tell them for say. You know for what they ask, I say, well, I for say, you know so, you don't know, you not, you not a work now, helped, eh eh, you're not a hand worker. Okay, you don't, you don't be, you don't be for be me, behave the way, where they do. I think, in my opinion, they should be apprehended, okay, for what they do. That's not right. Yes, of course, maybe someone, one or someone they will say to you, well, eh eh, madam. You don't then in our United States, how come you only just say a name? But let me just put it this way. I take myself second. And I make people in my life that I love first. And what you, we not able for, for go further, they don't do one. I don't help people then, where they are not even part of my family, I not even know them. So for me, I am a happy person, because if I be left, do what you want for do. Before I help, therefore suffer. So therefore, I am very happy for what I, what I, what you mean they do and what I don't, I don't contribute in other people's lives. So na me oh, um. I've na me oh, talk today, oh, I think put on a table, okay, today. So I thank you very much, keep going.
Thank you very much, Adamah, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Yes, caller, you there live on here, your name and who's I the call from?
Hey, triple A, Kushe, I mean Alma, I recall from LA.
You get the platform, sir.
Yes, I can little things a while, I just touch on, one, thank you very much for where you bring out that money in business, not crafting. I see I'm back now, I think now you know that now on your website, say they don't can a. The, 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 the port authority, authority, then suspend two people and, and fire the guy, we give him a me back talk. Hopefully, then we keep that, then we keep that the going that way they. Two, about this. Minister of Mines. This guy from the day where they appoint him, or from the day we might have.
You mean, you mean Lance?
Lance, excuse me. The Minister of Lance, from the day we might have your win election, another guy, they in them, we don't begin to come up, passed off. In them, we don't, they begin to come up, now one of the. Eh eh cabinet people and then they were people and they talk about arrogant, na guy, not to the first and this, he done the. Deep in head, he done deep in head with the city council, if you don't deep in head back with the. With the, the ju, the justice department, eh something not right, and I don't know. Why might have be, they look them people yeah, I don't know if na bad name they want give him. Or I don't know if you know what thing they go on, or now they push them. This mayor, I mean, people in America, you know, make committee, I didn't know Los Angeles, we mayor, Erica City. Certain things and they went saying that this Donald Trump serves up, when a Donald Trump they they come in front of him. Because again, in your city ordinance. When he said this, now what Donald Trump be the talk today, then one city police there, for the going catch illegal immigrant, now say me own city police there. Not a single one will catch any immigrant for you, now so he left, never caught. But I'm not, I'm not visit that will ever happen in Africa, they need for left this lady. Now this was this first time again, where this lady take over, where this government start operate. Now so then go one other guy back, we go disrespect the lady, being cleaning day, not cleaning day. This lady, they do a very, very good job, might have be a need for talk to them people, let, let them come up here this lady. It took me, I visit and they take advantage of the lady, because now woman, two, because now A P C, they just care for left this lady, let this lady doing job. now A P C, they just care for left this lady, let this lady doing job. If not any civilized nation, them police, they say for they under the city control, not to under the federal, the central government. So now that me and that, that Namion take today, thank you very much for taking the call, ma, thank you.
Thank you very much, Omar, thank you, sir.
Yeah.
Yes, caller, you there live on here, your name and who's I the call from?
There is a mic from Philadelphia.
Yes, Mike, you get the platform.
Yeah, the, 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 the lands people then, they put in too much fake paper, they come on at that place there, you know? They know the fake paper then too much, even you go buy land there, if you not be careful, the fake paper, the whole go do, give you under, man, you know, easy, everywhere the money already they eat at that place there, you know? For, for let the mayor go tell you say this, now place where you know for bill, we, we what target for come through here, so and, and we are still go give fake paper for, for let it, for let it go bill. My, that, that total embarrassment that they, my, yeah, that, that disrespectful thing and this, if you know, it's enough for happening at all, you know? Whether it's no bill now, now, now reason why they taste enough for bill now, because what I tell you go through here, you know? And now, if that I tell you go just know, that I tell you they back up and go create more problem, you know? Yeah, then people, they go for respect people in that place there, not just because now woman, you know, they really show respect, you know? Any other thing, um, for that, for that, for that ambassador on a China, you know, that guy, he, 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 he give for help with your people in that, that place there, you know? Not of, not, not of just sit on the eat money, they, they, they act like say they doing job, you know, they doing job at all, man, you know? Even when they suffer, and instead, instead of helping the people there, he try for calm them down, let, let, let not to not come on in between them, you know? They, they tell not fine, man, you know, they not fine at all, they do their job, you know? Any, any other place, them people and then they fire them, you know, they, they need for they do their job, you know? But not, not of eat money no more, you know? That mean, I mean, contribution and it, you know?
Thank you very much, Mike, thank you, sir.
Okay, yeah.
Yes, caller, you there live on here, your name and who's I the call from?
Patricia Van, they from New York.
Yes, Patricia, get the platform.
Yeah, me own contribution today is like, everybody they come with your idea for what in the president they do. All are they say COVID na, na, na reality, and I'm a tear one, they saw this talk a common work. More people then just abide to the rules and regulation of that country they. If he come, like, here sold that world in New York, they, even the governor don't pass a law, if he the common like he was, he forget, marks my face, if he not get time, then catch you, then they tell you for that, he gonna, he, he, he gonna jail for that. So it's fine for many people, they abide to the laws then, because if, I don't see like some videos, or then they send, you will see a group of people then they, then they talks, or even some picking and stuff like, then they say why they watch share a network, where they, they, they don't go for go doing work, they picking and they can't look, um, they all bunch by themselves, so. And with that thing, and they, if COVID they come, and therefore, and, and they do, they just pray for salon, because people they need for listening and do what in people and they tell them, although they, or they, or, or all now, so they go every day, we know how they feel, if they sit twelve, but they forget about you, if you for think about your family back when they back home, if then they see them, then say they see on a T V, then inside again, where they see before they talk to, oh, now this kind sick land don't count to wish on that so for do, then they do them. So me, I goes they beg, not to the president himself, but not think about, let them think about their self's life, let them say, oh, we not for do this, this, or if we know what we, we want, therefore not give a, a, a social distance, they go causing, and let everybody, if possible, if now you are clean, says he gets, he can tie up his nose and walk her, you know, means say pass on a bunch for on herself, he can get distance to passing, talk like, now he has ties, he get now here, he can pull her, he tie you nose, now beg number, we the beg people then a salon, because at the, where, or they, he said the number they grow up, they go thin, or they pray that, or no, he said anybody don't die in that country, they, and we not want for make it happen, because if that's happen, I don't know what you go say in a salon, we are, many people there abide to what they then they tell them, maybe they give themselves a distance, would I would say daily stay there, you know, means, and not go stay forever, it go, it go down, we are, what they then they see, where then they talk about here, now reality, to where if he see, they see no fine for talk anyway, I just exhausted entire, I just said it, we are, let everybody keep to the rules and regulation where they then they tell them, now reality, much a money they die every day, we don't tire for see, now that's no more. And even where they, they, they talking about the nurses, then they know themselves, may where they see, may themselves, may they give distance, may they take care of themselves, and that's no more me they say, I just, you know, no, we tire for, I tire now, we are , because the big Sierra Leoneans, they no more, back home, more go, what we want, not put marks before they go out, and when they go to market, say, play, get on my face, because the market say, the market people they say, now so they choke by themselves, may then they space themselves, now beg with the big, because we don't they talk too much from here, but me, now beg at the big Sierra Leoneans, say, more go listen and do the right thing, it go, it go be over, other things that don't come, it don't over, this have go, it over, we talk about that, I mean, contribution that tonight, do.
Thank you very much, Pat, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah. Yes, caller, you there live on here, your name and who's I the call from?
In Amadu Bangura from Belgium.
You get the platform.
I'm very happy for you today, bro, don't worry, try for chase you for talk to Triple A, and happy for give me the chance, may God bless you, brother. If they talk about the lands, and I tell you say they need for do more job and accurate job, especially on signing papers of lands, that they bring more corrupt another country when they late for sign the paper them, especially for we the diaspora, we all tend in the ring bell say we get for contributing at the economy of the government, but we the suffer, diaspora the suffer, anything we do in another country, my brother, you know, they come off fine, it is spend over ten, twenty million for one town lots, they not even sign them, the possibility between you and you want, they already signed, the lawyers them, then go eat all the money, me I know over three people in this Belgium, then get London and Salute, they today, they not even sign it from two thousand and nine, they today the paper they not sign, and if the governor say made a no bits on side, then pass it go give paper, who say that paper come out, it means, you know, they do accurate job with the, the governor, or because that woman, or because I didn't get the governments, because they understand say, this woman, not other party there, and no one let people in the rule, it continue with party business, one made a rule, continue with unity, because we say say they suffer outside, I want go back now salon. And we think that, a robot, that money, we pull up, then people in our, then wish then I do, with the work now fire force, I hope say we continue to us Sierra Leonean, we they able help, because the president not go able to see all thing. We are, make them continue for know them thirty rights, because it look like your country, even the, the, the police and the force there, they don't know the thirty rights, the way they enforce, improve the people them, they only work with them, like say, then as citizens them. Therefore, most of where they pulling in from, they did the same thing with the other people in the rock and a street, so therefore they remember, we are later use the thirty right and respect people, if you meet an environment, we are later hold out respect, talk to them with gentleness and say go inside, because that for your health, but for bit, bit people then, would they feel sick, because other people, they see we don't have a country, say we don't do the worst that we all, we are later keep the right of people, now this no one puts today contribution, and I bless you, brother, for continue to do this program, it really help.
Hi, thank you very much, Amadu, thank you, sir. Yes, caller, you there live on here, your name and who's I the call from?
Yes, people, good evening this time, confirm, this is from USA.
You get the platform.
Yes, okay, the first issue I want address now, grammar issue, I really want for get them thumbs up, I really parrophone, I hope say all of we just like, you know, I hope say, every Sierra Leonean will do in your little corner, most and salon, I define as say, everybody is Papa government, Papa government, we are sending point twenty million, if all we thirty million do the right thing, trust me, we would defeat the government, it look put an, an ordinary citizen to look in a big change what he do from that little thing, I hope say we the youth then, and we the young people then, I got that the name, they will copy from this, eh, money in, in, then I hope say they will recognize them as one of the most influential women of Suraleon. Okay, so the next thing I go, I want to talk about now, about the fake news, I just the big brothers and sisters, they really do this fake news, they really do good to nobody. This COVID virus is very rare, is very serious, there's time for politics, there's time for joke, it just like we fire the car like your neighborhood, not to activate the fire, because definitely you set your housing into danger, and I feel that I also right now, I don't look like three of me, five of the members, they win as Sierra Leoneans in America here, in London, we die of COVID virus, and we the young, and we is very serious, you know? So I really feel bad that, people they ask about light for, if you ask for light, police, you still, you have to understand for now, you ask for light for keep your food, if you they ask for light about watching movie and seeing, it really, I'm not gonna understand, because we are, they are really in for me, see, they have so much stress and about this COVID virus, so they are the big brothers and sisters, they make the, make the government, they use all the effort, they back, so they focus, they treat by the virus, they use them for the counteract, six news, so that is too much energy wasted, you know? Also about this social distance in Thailand, I really want for, terrible people in Turkey, about the hand washing, they are doing a wonderful job, and I'm so proud about, about the, even the local, ordinary people then, how they all contribute towards this thing, not driving to, to really the, even people already, they didn't have, suddenly they sacrifice that they say, what they do, what they give mask, what they do in a young little corner, even the market women, and for every person there is a blessing in disguise, I hope say after this, COVID go London, so this go show all the potentials they will get now, they will make, we manufacture young goods then, sometimes even grow with food, maybe some people want limit for this lockdown, you can even go make a small garden, even a cucumber from ten, ten, three weeks, it go don't grow, we even forget small money there, something other initiative we go don't give. About the social distance, I praise the mayor, he do well for the mask, but I'm really worried for our interest, if I see say, instance, if we day inside that crowded, it, it, she had the mask then, that is scary, I just hear this, they, they, they chief, many, eh, somebody, when I very close person to the president of Boare, die of COVID, COVID virus, they really get for the careful, they, they really distribute mask or the social distance, I just hope see, both the mayor, the local government, the, the minister of local government, S L R, whether or not the transportation minister, whether they all go come together and make they really find a solution, how they would, they would decongest this lonely area, P Z, rough court area, you know? I remember one time, if you just say against anything, if they will, you know, assign for free trading, and if not, if not the, they don't say for now, we know football, not if not temporarily, so they need to do something as fast as possible, because this virus, it don't actually spread naturally, it's very alarming. I remember last Saturday, I think, so that the ten would get, so it don't trade within just one week, that is so scary, you know? So Namion, I just so ceremony, may go pay more attention for the markets, I don't see they think about, about vehicles, about any other, my secondary issue, I feel, I hope say they will try to, they congest that city, maybe after this, then you think about relocating people, after, you know, what I love, we are trying like DC for city, then you can relocate to place, now money certainly trust, then go build local housing there, now my sixth deal, hospital or some type of offices, we create, just with attractive for them, but sincerely speaking, this is a lesson, even after COVID virus, trust me, viruses will always come, that congestion life will not use in Africa, we get for left hand. One more thing, if you don't mind, Nakabala, you said common, I really want boy, this one man called from Algeria, who condemned the police, Nakabala, I come out, mission I did abroad, Nakabala, this time for this lockdown, the people there, they been very, very, very non-compliant, I even talked to the mama, I be feel so bad that even, I talk to brother, when I, guy, which he always contribute that, I mean, I think, I really surprised, I think sorry Nakabala, we in a country, we own a village, then we can obey this, I'm surprised how Nakabala people then be so defiant about the lockdown, then even open, put you bad, that they need to club, they open club them, somebody even one teenager even slap, the, 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 the parliament is, is, is slap the chief, somebody even send acid pan, one youth in, in, in here, so if we defend we, within a western world, then don't know, just try for get fire, like, please say Dubai, no, no supporter because it Dubai, I really try to support the police then, but really, they be very non-compliant, so I'm, I recall Algeria, it's up to say the police, they just go talking, God, I, I disagree with that, I'm from Nakabala, Nakabala is my hometown, yeah, I'm a very proud, when I do go for La Bagal, we very obedient, but I'd even tell, enjoy that Nakabala they ashamed this time, what they miss deep and, and the law officers, thank you very much, let God bless you, three for yes, all the good of way, you know?
Thank you very much, caller, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Yes, us friend, what you get for we today?
Okay, the first one, I want to address first the mayor inside, the issue of land tenure system, that it are the, I want for remind government, let them try look into land tenure, the way we popularly inherit land in that country, that land tenure system, they know they look into it too much, you go any look on that peninsula, one side, they are know the, the exact place around that peninsula, where the, the government maybe just come, they may get a time, where they may go say, they go broke people in those, they don't see that government land, despite we have run get land, but the problem arise from how people in the inherited land, that land tenure system, so now that one day, I want for talk back that aside, then the area of the mayor, he said back, he be only run a project, where he run a recycling project, wherein he be run, like, how they try for recycle the waste product, if you run that project, they are thinking, I don't know who, 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 who are they fund them, for now, I would just say, say no more, say that they fund them, for do that program there, and be no say, that, that, them, them, they wouldn't get in the country there, then when they pull the gas, when I maintain gas, it will be no say that gas there, is useful for make, for make, even when they cook safe, then gas cooker, then they use it, so let them try young, uh, uh, space, so I give before establish, most likely we will revamp that area there, wherein we say, like, economy will get from them, boom, they, they, because I feel now gradually, it try for thicker, so now the other side, I want they, I just want to look into the mayor inside, then if we come to the water in section, I want for just try for talk, say, the water a problem, now the pipe system, then, then get for try, introduce the big pipes, you see, we mortal man, this is the, you see, when it broad this circulates, if you get big, what they call R three, you get veins, you get capillary, you get small, small thing there, if you get big pipe, would it come at the main road, inside the street, they all they take, then then get back other medium size, would it go right up, that force they, would they push them from the area they give, then the other branch, and I go now all my hosts, you know, go able for me, possibly what they done, go stop the possibility up. The reason why I talk so, here I won't, not Benjamin, Benjamin Lee area, they get problem, they wouldn't give them water for three days in a week, so when they get in that three days in a week, despite the timing, I believe some people in water, they open, would it run, and tap the run, the other one, they tap not the run, but what they feel see, now two reason, first of all is pipe system, because if somebody, the pipe, oh, they done a small pipe, then they already go back in a small pipe, like a small tube pipe here, you know, if you attack, now the one day, right, and he will force go, because I really forced the day, the other people are not go get, so now that area, there one was, let them think, while they try for restructure our water system, let them think about increasing the size of the pipes, now Belgium, I feel see they sell the best pipe, because I did UK go buy, let them link with Belgium, they talk with them and try see how far, not to now, you can lose in everything is, is COVID business, but we talk about, now less, a little bit more, we don't talk, all they, they put in a table, see, I don't see how go for the structure, who don't fit this wall of the COVID, then I want in, the other side of the water back, then Bowser them, working always come at the junction them, whether they can fill up for good supply, and I feel they will supply them big tank, like a, like threat round, or then what I please, they would they do business, now pay, they pay for our water, so now, when they come, instead of when they go now, Guma Valley directly for go to the water, then they can at the main streets, why, they come here evidence, and they tell I been go salud, that for me, talk to a junction there, I didn't, but they can't take water for all the one who we waste the area, fast they done before now get water, because I just now, they have been live, now that junction, they have been, they see the water, they runs, then they collect, so then go, so let them advise back, they restructure that area, they say, who now go get them Bowser, yeah, when I stop for can at the main street, beside the, go now, the pipe, they not big, if you can't take the, 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 the force of the water, would they go to the next neighbor, the street, you know, go go, pass, when I all don't full up, then tank here, I would turn, I do not to free, and money, I do take make rent here, so that's how the water, now I just want forgive. The other part now, we come to the way of how government they deal with this strategy here, it very, the global thing, we don't happen now, all the mistake with every country don't make. It very, the global thing, who don't happen now, all the mistake with every country don't make. The isolation in quarantine is very, very good, but the mistake would have been do, where I've been to try for look around. Instead of now, they isolate the people, and then I want thing, but they forget again, for isolate. The vulnerable people, then, not any community, that's the one that we get underlying sicknesses. They not isolate them, when you see today, in the UK, America, other places, they don't happen, they just, once they leave. They quarantine the healthy ones and expose the weak ones then. But the, the idea is there that you therefore release some of the people, and we're healthy, for be exposed to the virus. It will look funny, right, to come, but when you expose them to the virus, what in then they, then they, ah, ah, acquire from that. Then they get what they call acquired immune, immunity. That's not, you don't get this sick, but you don't fit them. So, in a way, we pass again to no other person, but you don't, you don't, you don't go isolate the person. Where in get for, get that disease there, for they will get acquired immunity from the disease, whether they bacteria disease, like virus disease. You don't, you don't go keep up, then you expose the vulnerable people there, where they, they not, 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 we get on the line sickness, forget this sickness here, so. You see, you got immunity, they entire, you get acquired immunity, you get natural immunity, whether you white cells and the feather, then the acquired one, I when they expose you. Because when given a place, an environment, it clean, absolutely clean, it very dangerous back at some point from health basis. I know they say the place get for dirty, but you get for get a time, when you expose the person to a certain level of pathogens or microorganisms. So that in body go able for take up, if not, whether that they wait, the bacteria or the virus come. Because you know, ever experience, eh, it attack them very, very serious. But that, it will be very difficult for them, we could deal with in a Sierra Leone. But now suggestion I make, because every country get their own way for deal with thing. For say, desert, they can able for do certain ideas in the next coming round, that now one advise that one. Yeah, then the final one, let them put a back in a table, not to for now again. You see, you see, then PPE, I wouldn't say personal protective equipment. Look at Sierra Leone, look at Liberia, look at some other areas in Africa, they have some raw materials. That would become industrialization now, we then able for industrialize, we get petroleum. And when you look at petroleum, it gets some particular ability, work for produce, which is what they call polyester. And this polyester, now think where it able for help for produce, then down there. Because when they produce cotton, then go make fabric. Um, Liberia, they get, they get, they get rubber, plastician, wouldn't go even for produce a, um, um, polytene. So, then they combine their, now they make for their, already they call PPE. So, in other words, let them think, Manor River Union, let them think about these things, let African unity, with an African union, when I EU now, when they call EU. They think about this thing, let EKOS think about these things, not for now, because it's now an area of fighting the disease. But let them think, they already make industry, already make EKOS, not to get, they not get, not produce a, a lab, or an industry, who will produce these things here. But we have the raw materials, and we have people who are capable of doing this, but now it matter of putting the heads together. It's still like we have, we have already better, so they keep, it's really, really, what we, what we draw draw. That you they tell you, say, if we ever get a property for like a, what do they say, alone. So, in other words, when they try for find the things that will get properties or properties, put them together to make something out of them, from creativity. Many go get a beaucoup sense there, just like a man who they, who they go to team, he not have been playing number nine. But because of his sense, he coach team, he they coach the keeper, or they coach the, they make. So, in other means, the way you coach teams, have you play football? But myself, I don't give the idea, not means I would produce, because someone will see, well, the man is, I be all to, why you know, can I alone? Back, if she comments then, why you not go do this? That's not the idea about it, some people are there to help in other things, so that not me advise towards this. Let God bless you, and I believe see there is something coming up. I tell you this, I vision for you, that something coming up for Sierra Network, and it's gonna come, eh, as long as we put it together, and we are ready to help Sierra Leone. Thank you very much, let God bless you.
Thank you very much, Usfend, thank you, sir.
Thank you, thank you.
Yes, Kola, I did live on here, your name and who's I recall from?
Yeah, Kola, my name is Koma, I recall from the United States.
You get a platform?
Yeah, um, me just try for talk to me people and, then era, paribo, we didn't see, that goat, that black goat, we know the location something. Not to met, we have a kitchen. Um, within I reply for say, this light and water business problem, what we didn't pay before yesterday, problem. If the government say, it accounts another lockdown, can go, the people, you know, they don't get the only little experience, um, um, experience. Let them enjoy on the guide, let them see within best thing go do. You know, the condition look normal, the government may butaku, uh, this particular problem, not to now we abnormality there. Or even they try for, um, effect another fourteen days lockdown, within that, those hours, or maybe a day or two. Will make, uh, the government really solve that problem. And then, let people not, uh, tend for repair, like I say, if the government not, not do that, they not go adhere to any other lockdown. If they do that, you know, it's like they go harm the nation. That they are, my baby, they baby people then. Then triple A, any, how we talk, and you know, most of them, we stubborn, we stubborn. And believe you me, if police say, you know, they not get for be harsh on people then, you know, sometimes. I quite know say, you know, they not get accommodation, for go begin, they go and lock up all year, and we go violate, uh, that they, they, eh, eh, rules during the lockdown. So, I quite believe say, you know, that I may then say, at times, you know, that the judge decide, say, you know what, make go the other way. Is, okay, now we, now we all go to talk about, but if you can watch. I mean, globally, I don't think all police are be really friendly, look at place like India or other countries. Even, we quite know say, you know, police, and I'm, I'm not saying the other, but we quite know say, you know, police, and I'm, just like we. But I choose for be police, actually, I mean, we all know say, you know, every worker in that country, you know, is like they are not paid. So, like, when they can they go on, especially as I mentioned, believe you me, they can be somehow, you know, like frustrated. And when they know say, you know, people then also know better, and if people not you uncompliant, but I can make you our friends, and you understand, still you see it to me. I know the advocate say, you know, they supposed to run, but triple A, believe you me, that's how long man let me know. When you engage your, like, gently, trust me, it was T one try chance, I mean, oh, oh, it was T one, I said, you know, make a go ahead and do whatever I do. Then the other thing, they gave one of the try for say, you know, Salomon can send money any side. Because when the lockdown, they say they can allow, you know, like food stuff or essential goods then for flow. I quite know say, you know, then truck, then, uh, cargo trucks then, a battery that say, I believe say, you know, they smoke one, two, three percent yards then. When they give, when they give impression, say, no, own a part of me, yeah, if ever they lay off to that, then install that. Then when, when, when they say lockdown, they make a deal lockdown. I remember, you know, I, I, I talked to a friend, I mean, we belong, uh, you know, some, some office, you know, with no kind of look, essential. I mean, eh, then the one location, then I asked him, he said, oh, I get for go, I feel like, but when lockdown in the country. Then he didn't talk, say, oh, no, I get for go meet that guy, I mean, it's like, he will give me pass. They, when they say lockdown, make it really be lockdown, dear, dear. Then the last thing, I mean, I read the other day, when you comment, say, we don't give, or you know, how many case, but we don't give, or I recover it. That recovery in, I mean, we all know say this particular fitness, don't get, don't get, uh, medication. I quite believe say, you know, the, uh, uh, recovery, they are not get for do anything for do with health facility. A natural, a automatic, and it depend on the person, eh, eh, system. But make we can go, I mean, in a sponsor, so we give that bad sound, it get. So, now I'm again for see people, thank you very much for give me the platform, I will continue for listen.
Thank you very much, Koma, thank you, sir.
Yeah, bye.
Yes, Kola, I did live on here, your name and who's I recall from?
Yeah, this is Omar, I call from.
You get a platform, sir.
Yeah, um, I just want caution, everyone, you know, me say no more. Because you know, possibly way sickly, now in this Corona go and bug. Because we don't see say this here, and are really a dangerous thing. You don't want put yourself at risk for something, some phenomenon, they call exaggerated, you mean response, what do you not mean? Now, we the first say no more people that we sick, now in this tier, they am bug, but even you well. You know, possibly way well, if this tier catch you, you, you mean system. Overreact into that stuff, then let's say, you got to get some to what they call inflammatory cascade. People away know the medical stuff, they know what they had to talk about. So, you getting sick, each time you get sick, you defense mechanism then, they think the way they fed that secretly. They're all a bunch for come, I did the inflammatory process, they come, they call an inflammatory cascade, you don't understand? When that it up, even you that possibly way well, you that possibly not sick, you get an exposure then they. It afraid say that phenomenon not walk by you, where they call exaggerated, you mean response, what do you not mean? If you the try for fit that, that particular disease, the way it on the inside you. Your system, that defense mechanism there, destroy all you, you defense. Like then white blood cell, the way they fit the illness, and the way you get. If you don't destroy that one, you don't expose yourself to certain diseases, they wouldn't call, autoimmun diseases, what do you not mean back? Now sickness, and then the way you own defense mechanism, they attack. The good cell, the way you get away, they fed them diseases, and they just in case if you get them. It is here, example for then, then disease, and they can be lupus, can be rheumatoid arthritis. Even diabetes, they relate them, diabetes type one, they relate that into autoimmune disease, true. You don't understand, venous anemia, all that in, and they, it, 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 it causes anything, and the way you own, um, immune system, they attacking on good cells. Now that thing that they can happen, so made a caution everyone, not to just the sick people then, you way well, self say. If you don't expose yourself to certain sickness, you don't put yourself, you don't prone, so, for you, you get sick the way you know, even I expect forget. You don't understand, the next thing I want to talk about, I know say I've been on bring, um, something up one time, I don't know if now Wednesday or somewhere around that time. While I'm in talks, say, we need invitation from the government. I know say some people then disagree with, with me, with them, which I respect that so much. But I think say, what you make me be bring that, and I from the background with me, come on, I'm not continue back, you don't understand? If you don't come more songs, like, like, now you won't say for you come out, you don't take, you don't come out of that place there. When you reach that the place, the people away, they get for welcoming, you they ask them, what do you meet? This is a tradition, you understand, what do you mean, people are don't pass long time ago. That grand, you don't take, you don't see, if you don't see, keep pass. Even the way they stuff, they will get that the place there, where you go, you get for, not to the woman, normally, you go married, you go for, you want go know, other, 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 this, eh, eh, who say this woman come out. My brother now, in casino, in nephew, in uncle, all that stuff that they get for go around, and they. For let you know them people then, they, they were able connect with them people then. Now based on that one, they need me to look at them. If we want for do something as Sierra Leone, as loving people for Sierra Leone. I think say, we get for get, the people away there, and the government, people away there, for let we all work together for able to do that. Because it could be very tough, for love, we just come on, and I no more go, and I will say, oh, to go do something. We get forget, foot patrol people, and where they get for to do that, we say, they are, for able, and back on now, and they follow, we develop Sierra Leone. Now me own contribution now today, yeah?
Thank you very much, Kola, thank you.
Yeah, yes.
Yes, Kola, I did live on here, your name and who's I recall from?
Yeah, two people, this madam, I recall from while.
You get a platform, Adama?
Yeah, the, I mean, I just want make this contribution on just to everybody, like. Um, the people of Sierra Leone, here's what I will talk about, say, people in this distance, like. We got it, we started, no, no, it's not distance at all, they get your space, no, no, that day. And do, our many people, they really take that as serious, and trust me, people up to now, people in there, where they, will not believe. The Corona day, especially in our salon. A lot of people, they always like for, where they say, where water don't pass, guys, before they take things serious. This tier are so exactly what are the stats, people in just be the say, now money finding at this, until we begin kill people. And we no want that day, so do please, let people and listen and take precaution. And also, this water issue, so, made the government try for do this water business, and as I say yesterday. Fourteen days, nothing other problem for lock, even if the lock the whole year, that state of emergency, they still lockdown. If you people are not listen to what is the exact thing for wash the hand there, for, eh, dinner, they host, the way they are supposed for dinner, they host there. And also, not take this distant thing serious, you know, make no sense, not still the work, so do please. Let people try for listen, take them precaution there, so, and let the government, you say, the water issue. Let him really, really do something about it, I know say this, like, they care thing, don't they, water, light, not to beauty in our country. But do please, let them just try their best, so now me own contribution is, and happy weekend, people, thank you.
Same to you, thank you very much, Adama. Thank you, yes, I said to, you get a platform, what you get for we today?
Hi, good evening, everyone, um, around the globe, and to people in our salon. I hope everybody they do well, I hope see everybody they follow, what they don't put in place. You know, say, that they plan for another lockdown, we really hope see, you know, um. Wait, and they do the lockdown this time around, then they really see what they who have been go through. For that first three days, where we say, now the lack of water, where you can, with most people, and be experienced, saying, I've been problem. And also light, we ask the government, let them make sure, say, light day, so the people will follow the news. You know, for nothing to go on, what in are the update, because light, not you never watch TV. If you not get water, you need string, you need water, or use up, or too many things then, water, now life, you can't do anything without water, right? So, we really they ask the government for make sure, say, then say, they do their own part, actually, they ask you citizens then, for let them do their own part. You self get a responsibility, we need for play, you know, really, if we work together, meaning the citizens then, as well as we law. It will be law enforcement officers, and the government, the administration, everybody work together, do your own part. It will become a teamwork, where everything will become, you know, fruitful at the end, right? So, what you make, I say law enforcement officers then, you know, I was talk to the camera, with one time, when the interview, they put in three days, after, after that three days lockdown. You know, the young man, they show, when they beat us, it'll show the injury now in back. Really, we not really ask for let them beat people, you know, in our country, we then at the twenty fourth century. You can't talk to somebody, educate them on the measures that we don't put in place, for let them follow that melody, you know. But using the cane, you know, or using your, your weapon to, to hit them, I know this is not the right thing, and we need to really understand, you don't injure now. That wound, they go become infected, if they're not treated, they become septic, right? And then he will probably die from that, so we really not want let them say, then they do things and like that, they therefore be very professional in how they handle things them. You know, what see, and they, I feel see, as some form of human rights advocacy, now they done human rights, people they need for talk. They don't need for begin to talk, and they ask, maybe then, health records, that's wrong, but they need for advocate, what they say, something like that, they they happen, right? So, really, we ask the police officers then, let them take things then, in a more professional way, as well as the military personnel, that would in at the streets. Where they try for put this thing there under control. And somebody called from Algeria, I believe, you know, if you the taxi them, beat in person, I not see why somebody else go go taxi. No, you know, that's not happen, you don't know the truth, now, now, they say, you know, not leave it there, okay? So, I'm sure, you know, we just call now the radio and see them, kind of see them, and I really want for say, uh, uh, kind of like Usfend analogy. We use the body, the body system in terms of how we will solve the water problem, now Africa, especially Sierra Leone, now we get problem with water. Right, say, the veins, the arteries, you know, as well as the capillaries, then we really need for pump blood, now each system. Because if you not really get blood supply, you know, now your brain, you get stroke. Right, if you not get blood supply, now your kidneys, or now your GI tract. You know, then organ then they become decayed, decayed meaning it dies. Right, so, just like you, 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 you lower extremity, meaning your legs and everything. So, I really appreciate what you bring that analogy there, we make. So I really appreciate what you bring that analogy there, we make sense, we need bigger pipes. Because you get vein which is bigger than the arteries, you know, just the walls are different. You know, if that you go help with with politicians then or we governments, for let you understand say. Now the things that we then put in place, let me where they get the supply, we need for get in our country. Because me the water business, it really distress me, every day what I talk about, I feel say is stressing, just to imagine. You know, symbols for light, you know, they only two thing and they know put on that the. You have the table now, let me say, you don't don't, not need to worry about that, then we begin to worry about other infrastructure developing in the country. We come to the healthcare, we come to the education, we already there in place, but in order for show any fruit. Of what you don't put, what you don't put in place right now, because all the people they wait they don't give free education. They still get for finish high school, then go college, get a job. But right now, in order to do that, we do need water, we do need light, as well as making sure the place is clean. You know, for we may on a free town, it do well, but you know, we just want let it be aware a little bit. You know, when they do this donation then, let, now then in at the frontline, they they try for educate people on waiting for do the measures then what they for do for use mask. You know, when they do the donation, let them really do the social distance, let them try for spread out. Because I feel say down there, it lacking, it lacking big time. Because if they not do that, then we really not taking everything and then really use them very well, right? And for the old lady, um, I give kudos and I applaud um. For exposing those poor authority people then for being for this, that was her business, that was wrong. And I'm glad she voiced it, she's older, she voiced it. So I'm hoping and I'm praying that every Sierra Leonean will learn from what she that mommy do. For say, what would I do something where you wrong, you need for stand up and advocate and speak up. So that they will not say, what you they do, you wrong, you're not supposed to do this, if we all do that, we contribute good before, okay? And also we'll call with family members then, it's very important, love tell them that this virus is serious. This virus it a cure, this virus not to fake. Because that statement where they go around, they give them these mixed feelings, not to the right thing they do. We especially where they live now, we must like indoors we do, you know? So love tell them the truth, love make unknown to family members then, friends then, what they call, who they reach out to. Tell them say, this not to something we for play around with, we already they see the numbers and they go up. So long from who get first case, I feel like say the number then, the rate where they, at the speed where they go right now, it's just too much. You know, somebody needs for put a break to it, and who rather for put a break on it, you know, no no, you take your foot off the gas. Now we, this Sierra Leoneans then, we the people then, I would therefore do this, not to gosh government, this not a teamwork. Where everybody for do something for make sure say, you know, get out of control. And this will continue for preach this, because we really want for make sure say, salon, you know, we not get destroyed by COVID nineteen. Because you know what, we now we want to destroy COVID nineteen, I would therefore do that, and we have to do it together. You know, like today I call me, I I talked to my sister as well, you know, and my brother, I want let her know say this is serious. I tell her say, go take napa, maybe to Guanapa cutting, go get the law, let them sew mask. This not idea why I look, you know, people know they do, and also I hear from the first lady, where they do one of in talk. Which I feel is a good thing, which nine people they donate now across the country. So let we they tell me, oh, put them back, let them stop going, because you not get from the one who didn't do it, you self can do you. You just buy elastic, you give one lapa, you go to the tiller man, they will swam for you. We all will get like three pairs, so that you not you wear the same thing every day. You know, if you get three, today wear one, tomorrow you wear the other one, you know, at least you the wash sun, so it is dry. You know, everybody they implement this, you know, so we'll try in different directions. So if everybody they try in a different direction, how to combat this disease, you know, this virus here will get rid of them very quickly. So me still say we all can do that, and I believe say, um, now just pray. That's not the last part, we all get for pray, and the other thing AAA, I really want to ask. You know, the the Ministry of Health and Sanitation about the isolation protocols. Are they really using a microcon, are the isolation sweet them, or then they use a negative pressure room? I bring this up yesterday and I feel saying are something we want for get answer to. If we able get answer to that, there will no say, then they really do everything possible for make sure they. The virus not transmit so quickly to the next person, because they need to use them measures and they then are not feeling at the right point. They can go and check, who that will get COVID nineteen, then in isolation, where we say there is a negative pressure. Or there's a microcon to ensure that, you know, the virus, you know, they go outside, now only clean air and then they go inside the the the. The room, you know, and then also dirty air, not they come out of the room. You know, that's not the only way of explain explaining it in in Creole, you know? So now me don't take that for tonight, you know, I really the pray with the hope say this can to a path, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Isatun, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Tony, you get a platform?
Yeah, um, family, I'm not a co-chair, um, this is not Tony from Boston Mass Associates. Um, the first one we are want for talk on now is um self quarantine. You know, so when if when they start the quarantine, there are a lot of people in the way, then we get for say. Then they go do self quarantine, and I feel say now they they lapses starts. And I remember say we talking at this program, because how effective are some of those quarantine? Where again you get somebody who don't left salon for ten years or five years, get friends and families, we probably want for see them. And the risk of these people traveling, you must notice most of these flights and we they go Africa, not to just direct flights to Sierra Leone. The most of them, they transit to Belgium, maybe go Belgium, probably possibly left America, I get for left with a lot of people, and given different nationals, they go there, you know, no side. People that they don't come out, so that even within that flight there, there's a tendency or high possibility that somebody can catch. Twenty and day, because somebody go the sneeze, you go the cough, you go the this, and you guys are still ingesting within that same cabin there or whatever. So the risk of them things that they, so official for make they able for deep down, you understand? And do their tracing or whatever, most of them people in the way we do self quarantine, they really need for begin follow up with them. And therefore follow, if they're still this alone, and then people that with them is tapped to, or with them lodged to, or whatever, let them see. This is just a general whatever, because general check for make they before see how they care before. For able for trace, because there's a whole lot of risk in that when people they make quarantine. We see on social media, we are in, now nets, the the ambulance or a vehicle went there and took people them away, you understand? That name is just a one-off situation, several issues on there, on the same similar issues in the mid on the app, when people in the media, even different locations them. Because we all know the country, it very in terms of law, law and order, a very, very poor, people they make their way. By just giving somebody fifty thousand or hundred thousand, it definitely they surrender and enable you understand. So for me, I think say they need to go back and and check all the people they do with them in quarant, we do self quarantine and follow up with their families, them check. Continue for check, because if 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 that man they say in wealth, and a lot of cases that already come up now, people then they say. Not to in to in wealth, and which might be true, you understand? Probably somebody don't, they will sick, you go in hospital, you not know which order health center we go, we come in contact with them, no physician as a day or whatever. Definitely, there is a likelihood, because you not know say this was the other exposed to somebody, we come or somebody, we get the the virus. Definitely endanger everybody, even Mass Association here, we the nadam make with the CRIs. He did, I mean, with the CRIs, right, Mass Association is third in the list, New Jersey second, New York is first, then Mass Association third. Because there's a whole lot of things happening, where in people they not they complied, compliance very, 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 very low, people in the interact still now. And even the same thing with the C and what they happen in salon, we see clubs there, we see people there still they get. Uh, binding, people there still they hangouts, now different, different location, different house system, and there's a likelihood, you understand? This is not child's play, if places like America, they think very difficult for handle, these are some of the pitfalls. These are some of the challenges they having, because compliance level very low, you understand? We now in the app, not the same thing, they could cut across even as a loan, we not to an exception. People then not just to law abide with society, is 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 a society where in people they think they know everything. And people then feel say actually begin to tell people they are waiting for do their, ah, they are the sick, so the the wash sun go down, or they this, they that. It's just like they think it's just a joke, and it's not really a joke, it's a serious pandemic where they kill people them, they kill, really they kill, you know? So basically, that's now what I want for talk, that I want for talk about the water side, eh, who's when, um, who's when they say pipes and this and that, there are pipes. It's not was a pipe, not the way the give the water. In two thousand and 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 I wish two thousand and and some nineteen, no, no, not two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and one or two thousand and two. There was a, they put them strong pipe and then blue thick pipe, they mentioned that the Brook Street, where they redo, yeah, yeah. What is happening is, it's, 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 it's a regulation problem. The problem in managing water and then at the whole bottom line situation, if you go outside the pipe beginning from from mile or two. And drive along that side, they just drive slowly, they see the amount of water with the waste along that side, with the waste right through across. And regulations to know the, if you we all know see there is a law and or a lawlessness in salon, people are just the boss pipe. By rights, you know, for boss, there should be an authorized study for be somebody from Guma, we for can't for can't connect your pipe. You know, for just go normal fair one, but on us, just go boss pipe, dig in the pipe and connect pipe, this is what is happening. So by the time when the pipe, the last man on the water, not they give, because so many people don't connect, 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 connect. Oh, no, 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 the the sub pipe then we then gets, you know, apart from the bigger pipes, this not the situation. So you see one gets to get over fifty, sixty pipe exposed on the streets, they all they go down, go collecting at the same source. You understand, and the pipe come, but because everybody if you say I want for connect at the main source, all man they go connect, connect, connect at the main source. That then at the problem, we make the pipe, the water not the run at the normal pipes, so within within the network for making go, so that's not the problem. So long that's management issue, we get management problem in so many areas, not only, even the government bosses, public transport station. And transportation, you see how we bosses there two, three months on unpack, why? Because they take the wrong people there for for drive those bosses, we not even get the expertise. Their place for drive big truck now, you get forget C D R driver, you don't just say because they drive um um eight tire or they drive whatever, now go begin drive bus, you understand? Until we begin do those things, we begin manage, we put, I mean, in management, we call them emotional intelligence, we begin use initiative. Not to just books, so many times we see people and they just, you book, book, book is not a book, you therefore apply what you like, you therefore get initiative. You therefore before think, you understand, that makes you, that ma- makes you a leader, a good leader. Not to just rubber stamp, what you dinner book, you just know, you understand, this is the problem we having, you understand? Then the other area where you talk about egg, you understand, where you talk about like ignorant at him. So many times, when they get the issue, I just, egg not just a one issue we come up, but many a times. The people and we they regulate food, business, now salon, they probably not get those ideas. Or probably they not know what's in our stock, in in management accounting, we go with to call stock level, I mean, the cost account or whatever, when I elementary. With somebody who do the elementary accounting or whatever, we say you see they took up on like four, five, four, and those half cool and everything. Many a times, so to you can see what people then they do, especially in normal stock, especially crisis period like this. Somebody go get install where they keep rest, the older rest don't come, or Paulos the egg, at the fridge, who say destroy egg. It de pack the egg, the egg where they can't supply the first of this month, then at the back, they already can't supply the fifteen, it just put up before. They already can't supply the thirty, you put up before, so when you ready for sell, it's like it's just selling the one we did before. Which is lasting first out, so it's using like like for like four. And when the numbers were waiting for doing for do five four, which is first in, first out. So now that we get this crisis period, even those stock where they on the back, probably would only do two months, three months, now they now they come out. You understand, I make you find us, even I don't say I would do, you understand? People that where they regulate food, food authority or whatever with this salon, because I know say we get the way they go shop to shop there in the mall shop for watch goods there. We don't, 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 don't expire and whatever, then then job not to just check. How the goods are expired, or you know, expired, the job now for explain or teach these people how for handle stocks. Because many a time, these people not get the idea, they just get that that normal stock, stock, uh, way, where the stock just open, they just they can't pack the things there, they can't pack. So then just they sell, lasting first out, lasting first out, and then they put, so there's a possibility to say this egg we don't be, even if now salon egg. Now salon then lamb or whatever, a possible reason, because these things, they all have shelf life. He that do it away for take, and after that, if you not on a proper temperature or whatever, it goes, it goes, it go well, you understand? So I would really count, I would then say I would then the pack them, right? Then I did make sure say, the first one we come, then first we for sell. I see the one where they before they no more than they sell, and know so many things, there's so many things in that, so let me if I notice. If you work on a semi, a batch of street or something, most of the things that wait in the sense, some expire. Because then they go to that today, you understand, so possibly, I'm not saying only a lie, I mean, a hundred percent now too. But possibly that now some of the situation where somebody go eat food, when I even a salon, the 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 manufacturer. It's still well, we think, you know, because probably not in a store, or you didn't have food for so many time, we don't know they go to the normal procedures, then they follow the map, they 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 distribute them. You understand, so now me don't take that, I know I'm saying still the show, because so much have been said, you understand? I just want for thank you for the opportunity, I mean, people are giving the silence, um, um, information, everybody they giving concern. The only problem, and police, I don't say it's a lot of times, they get for land out for the escalates issues, you know, just for pam pam, you get for some tiapu, you just get for use. No, you get for land the escalation thing, you get for now, you get for some of them things, and they see how you but dialogue and say for no. You understand, because they also, many a times, we police then said that they smoke, this is not even truth, most of them they smoke weed. They smoke, they take drugs, they drink alcohol, and most times, when they 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 work on a net, say, I mean, I mean, I mean, a street person, where they take us, it's the morning. Why they interact with the internet, you see, most of them not smoke, they not drink, they not on this, so many a times, they not in the right senses. So in the way, then then judgment's not, no, 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 not clear, you understand, because they get some impaired thoughts. You understand, so these are some of the problems where we police they always get. So if you find us say, among that lots, they will be the worker, some pastor don't not act double, some, some, the one that regularly don't do it, fishing at the instead, and then a good act. Because they are not, they are not in your right senses, especially when you can't predict in a day. Many a times, we saw police then they more hyper, you know, now me don't take that, I just, thank you very much, brah.
All right, thank you very much, Tony, thank you.
Yeah.
Yes, that's now Tony, two regions from Boston. Um, now we go lock today on program, and for this week, ending the eighteenth of. April twenty twenty, we go there again on the twentieth of April. Tomorrow, we'll join you, I'll be on Sunday, make we see how the conversation go. Um, there's a video where we do, where we upload right now on Asia Network Production YouTube channel. If you know watch them, it's go watch them, the latest one we upload for the bike riders them within a model junction. Them, you know, say government don't put the fuel price down, but then refuse for put the riding price down. Because they say, who say then they ride, they rode bad. Somebody did it, we can insert sexy. Where he talk, and he is calling for anti-corruption, for go investigate the body. We they look over them, he want make anti-corruption for investigate model junction. The bike rider already, the chairman then, the one the way they collect them or need them. You, you, you know, if you not hear it from them, you're not gonna wait in then they go through. And I only say a network can make you get this, from there your man there are. I know say plenty time, people and they condemn them, they talk against them, all the bike riders them, then this, then that. But when you get in the mic, when you turn the camera to them, you will get the story where they come out from them. If you want to watch the video and the entire different other riders, they wait talk, gonna share a network production, you will get then they. Also, they lock today on program, good air back on Monday, whatsoever you do, stay safe. Listen and comply to what in the world body people and they say, and for Sierra Leone. Please, your life better pass any other thing, and when you get life, I make you the member for do something tomorrow. Without that, it go mona you. So, social distancing, we know it's difficult, but make you practice them. And always try for keep yourself safe, if you not get something for go do now do, not go. And also we don't use for go to neighbor, we don't, we don't use all length in the day, but please for now. Avoid people compound, avoid people compound. Salomah left pass pass, eh? Go there back Monday, till we meet again, T P O they say, ta ta.